The city Pleasantville City Council Work Meeting. Today's date is February 6th, 2023 at 6:30 PM. This meeting has been fully advertised in the city newspaper before this was opened. But meeting that, authorizing sunshine law, roll call.
No, I'm sorry, Davenport.
Down. Not even twice down your mind. Retired.
Yeah, yeah, definitely. Davenport?
Say it again.
Davenport.
Sorry.
Here. Thomas, present, Kamona.
Present.
Korean.
Present.
White flag.
Present.
System.
Present.
All the tenants.
Can I say a motion to approve of these minutes?
Motion.
Say it.
I.
Eyes down. Both of the offices, mayor.
I'm going to do the sunshine, please.
Oh.
Say sunshine.
Yes, I did.
Yes, you did?
I told him.
Yes, you did.
Maybe Dr. Friesman, I called after I've become. For the record, the promotion has been pulled. It will be the next meeting. We're moving to letter B, commendation.
Okay, commendations.
Okay, what I was gonna do was give him a commendation for our Sergeant Porter, who just retired, but he's not here tonight. So what I'm gonna do is pass, I'll still read it, and then I'll give it to Chief. So Chief can pass it on to him. Okay? City of Pleasantville Office of the Mayor's Certificate of Commendation. Where Sergeant Mark Porter has been a sworn member of the Police Department since January 1998. And where Sergeant Porter has served in active duty, Army, active duty Air Force, and the Air National Guard at the 177th Fighter Wing. And where Sergeant Porter has held the ranks of patrolman, detective, patrol sergeant, detective sergeant, and acting detective lieutenant. And where Sergeant Porter is known to be highly reliable, trustworthy, and loyal supervisor. And now therefore I, Judy M. Ward, Mayor of Pleasantville, New Jersey, on behalf of City Council, this administration, and the citizens of Pleasantville, do hereby commend Sergeant Mark Porter for 25 years of law enforcement services and pray for a healthy and rewarding retirement. And witness whereof I have set my hand and cause the field of the city of Pleasantville to be affixed this 6th day of February in the year of our Lord, 2023. Signed, Judy M. Ward. And just give him our best wishes.
Thank you, ma'am. I will let him know. Thank you, everyone. How about passing the general review?
Okay, first in and then is ordinance number one, first reading amendment, Chapter 48, Police Department Title Hiring and Promotion, Section 48-14A, Exemption from Civil Service Examination.
Any questions?
Yes, can we give an explanation?
Certainly. This is amending Chapter 48 as it states, which you already have in place. There's a new provision that was added under the New Jersey Civil Service Commission that the candidate must complete the law enforcement training within nine months of the date of hires, which has been added to the ordinance. Okay, thank you. Come on.
Any more questions?
Resolution 43, improvement of participation in the LEAP implementation grant.
Any questions?
I just have to say, this came through public service and we were in, we kind of concluded and went along with the operation for this. And if we get it and it goes through, it's a wonderful thing to see.
Question. Is this with the?
It's the hyphen five thousand.
Hyphen five thousand. Question. Now, it will live, it will be a fee for us to use? I know it says shared service, but we would have to pay for it?
This is.
So the equipment, the resolution we're giving today is to support the grant application to, through the LEAP program, with the city of Atlantic City being the lead. The city of Atlantic City is applying for the money to purchase the equipment, which is close to $500,000. There will be no cost for the equipment for the participating municipalities, but there will be a fee associated to utilize the equipment, but that's to be determined. And I'll give you an example. For instance, should they be successful in getting the equipment? If we decide the schedule, and I'm saying this because I hope that this would be the case, that we could tell our constituents that when they put in a request to have a pothole fill, that we can say our pothole, our repair days was X, Y, and Z. On those days or dates, we, the city, will incur costs to utilize the machine on that day. What we'll be paying for is the material and the labor for the person or person to come in and to repair the potholes on that day. But what it'll do is bring efficiency. Right now, we don't have that. We sporadically fill the potholes as we're getting the information. And we certainly do not have the proper equipment to properly fill the potholes. So this is a state-of-the-art equipment that we've been looking at from the city's perspective for a long time, that we just really didn't see how we could get it into our budget. But now with a shared service agreement, some other community can take on that cost, and we just take on the cost of labor and material.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
So we must still be using our men?
So those are the things that's to be negotiated. Today's resolution is to support the application for the equipment. The way that it was discussed was that someone from Atlantic City, because you gotta remember, this is a half a million dollar piece of equipment, where I don't believe that any municipality is going to be feel comfortable with other people using their equipment. So it'll be a trained, skilled person from Atlantic City designated specifically for these duties, that we will pay the cost of labor for that person to come over on a particular date and time throughout the month to fill the potholes.
So that's already negotiated?
It's not. It's an example.
Oh, an example?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, that's why I said it's to be discussed. This is why I really didn't want to get into things that was not negotiated, so we can talk about that. But today's resolution is to support the application for the equipment.
Yeah, but what I'm saying is, we're voting so they can get the grant. But, you know, if we have other issues and if it's like, say for instance, if we're not gonna use our men, but you want me to vote on these tonight?
You said we weren't gonna use our men. I just gave you an example of what was discussed. We can talk about how you want to utilize the equipment at that designated time. Today's resolution is simply to support an application at no cost to the city for the equipment.
Okay, I see. Sorry, please. Well, my question is basically what you just said. Are we gonna train our own men to use it also? So basically, that was the same thing that I wanted to know. I think that's.
It's to be determined?
No, I understand that, so. But also, you know, if we're gonna put our, we're putting our name on this grant, am I right?
Right.
So we're gonna have some skin in the game. I think we should also be training our own, as I know.
Absolutely.
Yes.
So any last questions?
Yes, I know. I just wanted to add that there is a possibility that it will be negotiated, that our people will be trained along with the organization. Number two, it brings advantage to the city when we fix our potholes. Because this equipment blends the new material with the old material, opposed to what we are having now, where we pass a pothole, it becomes detached. And there's a resurfacing game. So I just wanted to show some light and got this little research out, how it would work.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so listen.
Any more questions?
No, I just wanted to just make it clear, council president, through you. You're not bound to this. This is simply indicating that you don't mind if your name is added for purposes of the application, and all future negotiations are to be determined. So you're not bound by any of your name to this. They're simply seeking your approval so that they don't do it unilaterally, without you knowing about it.
Thank you.
Any more questions? Next.
Resolution 44, authorizing assignment of municipal lien certificates to venture Franklin Capital LLC.
Any questions?
Resolution 45, rewarding the contract for the overturned heights to escape improvements to Command Company Incorporated in the amount of $594,425.06.
Any questions?
Resolution 46, authorizing emergency sewer repair services on Anthony Court and West Jersey Avenue.
Any questions?
Yes.
The question is to say, when this is happening, are there incident reports that are created that can be reviewed later on?
Absolutely. So emergency is exactly what this is. So the sewer in that area is one of the areas that has not had recent repairs. So it's really deteriorated in that area, and we had a complete collapse, which means that we have to take care of the problem immediately before it created. When we talk about sewer health issues. So we have all the documentation as it relates to how the Sewer Department and the Finance Department went out to sort, to get to the contractor. However, the work has began, and I'm not sure if it's completed. Is the work completed for the sewer? Is the work completed on Anthony?
No, there's still been work done. Pretty close to me done. But it wasn't emergency because it was, it was. Say again?
No, so I was just trying to get clarity to see if the work is completed. So it's still being worked on. However, we weren't able to give the resolution to you until today of the council meeting because the emergency happened prior to today's meeting.
Okay, so first, I should have started with saying thank you, you know, you handled it. When I reviewed the communication, I was impressed. What I'm thinking about is, are we, have we set into place a motion to the system to evaluate the recoveries or to prevent the recoveries of such an incident?
Yes, we're working through those issues now as it relates to sewer and all of our infrastructure.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yes, Mr. Lou. Is there any way, because I know we've had a few emergencies come up with the sewer so far. Is any of we can get like a list of all the sewer breaks and, you know, repairs that have had an emergency within the last year or two years?
Well, I think they've done two for the work agencies we've had, with one that was down in, in a climatus probably three years ago. And then this one.
Climatus was last year.
I mean?
Climatus was last year.
Nah, I think it was at least two years ago.
Maybe I know we've had a couple on Delila Road and.
They're minor stuff. They're minor stuff. Right. Some of them weren't even sorted, some of them were spread.
All right.
They take care of.
Well, our next committee, we'd like to have a printout of all emergencies within the last three years, if that's okay.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you.
Council President?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Resolution 47, enabling the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection's Green Acres Program for supplemental funding requests.
Any questions?
Yes, can I ask a question?
Yes.
What does this contain? So I see it says Washington Avenue Waterfront, so that's.
It shouldn't say Washington.
It says Washington. I'm sorry, I read wrong. Baby Avenue.
Right, so that is, as we call the, as we know it as, the old Joker's Field. But the project name for the state purposes is the Baby Avenue Waterfront Park. There's additional Green Acres money that is being administered or allocated to the state for parks and recreations. Based on the criteria for the grant, as we studied it, we believe that this park meets the criteria for the grant, and we wanted to apply for additional money to help us with the bridge in the gap with the funding for the waterfront, for the enhancement of the waterfront park.
Any more questions? Say it again.
Resolution 48, authorizing the execution of a redevelopment agreement with Ideal Institute of Technology regarding the redevelopment of 1000 Washington Avenue.
Yes.
Any more questions?
I just, it was your fault.
Any more questions?
Yes.
Say it again.
I see, yes.
Oh, good, sorry. Sorry.
This agreement, does it have a tenure or timeframe on it? Like example, it goes for 10 years, and then comes for review or whatever.
Okay, so are you asking this question as related to the redevelopment project?
Yes.
And we do have a project that's. Right, is the redevelopment attorney here? The redevelopment attorney is not here, but the project manager for the project is here, and also the re developer is here.
Okay, my question was in reference because I was reading the document, and I thought I should have found any agreement that we are going to be discussing.
From what I recall, this is under, this is basically under five years. But I'm gonna defer to the consultant, because this is basically a short-term tax abatement.
Okay, Rick, can we come?
Yeah, so this is a redevelopment, it's not a tax abatement. This is a redevelopment agreement purely to give the re developer the zoning rights to the old press office building. The old press office building was zoned, underlying zoning in the city of Pleasantville, light industrial. And Ideal Institute wants to open an adult vocational school, which is something the city and City Council supported. The city did a redevelopment plan, which allows for the proper zoning for Ren and this dude to open the school. The redevelopment agreement is necessary so that he can go to the planning board and get approval for reconditioning the school and property, recondition the building and property to make it, to make it a school. Nothing in this agreement right now is about anything really but that. And as a redevelopment agreement, he has, once he gets his approvals and entitlements, which he's ready to submit to the planning board as soon as this is approved, because he can't submit until this is approved. Once he submits to the planning board and gets planning board approval, the agreement calls for him to submit a construction schedule to fit out the school. But the zoning, because it's really become, became a zoning document, will stay with the re developer as long as he's there. He can continue to operate within the proper zoning of the redevelopment plan that was approved by the City Council.
Yes.
Go ahead, because I. Yes, once, once he has all the planning boards, approval, all of that stuff, like how long would it take for you to get a school up and running and be ready to?
Ren, I see you have your question for you. So we're like six months behind the schedule, so as soon as you guys approve it, I want to do the schedule, it's a groundbreaking. So hopefully February ends. The school, the ribbon cutting, we're expecting between April or May.
So if you say you're behind, who's behind?
We are behind.
Okay, you're behind.
Not you guys. We are behind on the schedule on it. Because it's a lot of back and forth. Our attorney representing us, they got hired by city, and then we had, there was a conflict, so we changed the attorney. So it was a process. So on my head, we're, so we're ready to get going.
So, council. This document I'm holding is an agreement. It looks like a contract to me. A contract can have a timeframe that you can perform, and then you reappear for reevaluation. And that's what I'm asking about, is it in here, yes or no?
A construction schedule will be added once he gets the entitlements. Okay, the redevelopment agreement is for the term of the zoning. I mean, really, it's the goal. I can't say the word. It's the goal as long as they're the developer of that site, so they can operate the school. That's, that's the idea. And really, I would think the next time we do our master plan, we would change the zoning and correct it. Now, once he finishes building in the redevelopment agreement, once he's finished building out the school, because he has to fit out the school inside, but he also, the redevelopment plan allows him to do some outbuildings for the different kinds of vocational things the students do. Once that's built out, he will come to the city and ask the city for a certificate of completion, or certification of completion, I think it's called. And then that goes away too, because he's completed the work pursuant to the redevelopment plan. There was no hard timing. The city wanted him to be able to operate this school. That was the whole concept, that we wanted him to operate this school and have proper zoning. If it was zoned properly to begin with, we wouldn't have had to come down this path to do it. It's improperly zoned. We had to correct the zone, Brandon.
Yes, so I benefited from a vocational school. I went to school as a mechanic in a vocational school. I made it a mechanic before I sent it to Harvard for a second or third degree. So I appreciate what he's doing. But this thing does not have any reach in it, that he can come back, and I will just sign it, and this thing will start to go. I would not be advising the mayor to sign it. It has to have a timeframe. If it is 10 years, 20 years, 30 years, that looks fine. But it's open like this, I'm not comfortable with that. I'm not gonna go back and try.
Council President? Yeah, may, Mr. Giannetti, I just want some clarification. I obviously am not the redevelopment attorney. I did take a cursory review of it. So I just have some questions, and maybe lose your face if you can help council as well. Because it, within the body of this document, it does specifically cite to the short-term exemption or abatement statute. It also indicates five years. And I recall, because I just jotted down a few notes, that it talks about specifically where it's got the city's obligations and prior there too in paragraph subsection 2.10, as well as 3.1. Five years seems to be the timeframe within which it speaks to the term of the agreement. Are you saying that that is not applicable?
That's a different, and maybe I had confused what the council was asking. The city has an ordinance that allows for a five-year tax abatement on commercial properties, by the way, just for the improvements, not for the existing structure, for the improvements that are made, which Ren and his team and his attorney would like to use that. I think they have to come back to council for that if I'm correct. I think that's what Joel had told me, that they have to come back with a financial agreement for the five years of abatement. But it would be the pure five-year abatement, nothing longer. There's no financial agreement beyond that. It's the ordinance that the city already has. So that would be for five years. That's in it, but we're not. The agreement is a zoning document to that for the approval to do the school and the improvements to the school.
I think, I'm sorry.
This document appears to be all-inclusive of, it may not be the specific financial agreement, but it appears to be all of the various articles that establish a redevelopment agreement between the city and the re developer, including and all the way up to the demarcation of the project. So I guess I use this and not reading it word for word and speaking with anyone prior to coming here as being the agreement, which would essentially afford them the opportunity to move forward, assuming that they received all the various permits and permissions from any government approvals that were necessary. Are you saying that that is?
No, 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 that it's to move forward. He's got his site plan ready to be submitted to the plan.
Okay, all right. So when they vote on this particular resolution tonight, or if they vote in the affirmative, then they're essentially giving permission for him to move forward, and they're contractually obligated, as would he be, right? Okay. It actually is, what I read through your council president is, and correct me if I'm wrong, because you've done the work on this and I haven't, there are certain benefits to the city, specifically, notwithstanding the redevelopment, obviously, but also a lot of the fees and the costs which are going to be picked up for professionals. Is that correct?
Yeah, and the fees and the costs have been picked up to date under the memorandum of understanding, which was part of this agreement. They paid for the legal fees, they paid for the planning fees, all that. And actually, and they will continue to pay for the planning board's site plan like any other applicant. There will be very little for the city to do. You're correct, it is a full redevelopment agreement. But unlike a lot of redevelopment agreements where you're talking about purchasing land, doing demolition buildings, relocation of existing businesses and residents, this is a building that Ideal owns and purchased, but could not operate pursuant to our zoning. To correct that, City Council wanted the zoning corrected, and it was consistent with the master plan. The planning board found it consistent with the master plan, and by ordinance, it was approved by City Council. The redevelopment plan, which allows him to operate the school and build the school out and fit it out. So he, through an escrow agreement, paid for all these items. And under the redevelopment statute, he can't actually get approval from the site plan at the planning board unless he's the designated re developer. The redevelopment agreement is designating him the re developer so he can get the benefit to build the school, and then, more importantly, operate the school. Because the building that the press was operating a office in is zoned, light industrial. So we needed to have a way to get him to be able to operate the school. And there's benefits to the city, because you had a building that was going vacant, underutilized, that would have come off the records. This is keeping it on the tax records. And he may make improvements and add additions to the building, which will increase the taxes, in which case, for the increase in taxes, it like that phased in over five years, which the city has an ordinance that allows that for commercial properties, to encourage that kind of activity.
What, any more questions? Say it again. Next, thank you.
I'll do it.
Thank you. Next.
Yes, this will be with the bill.
Well, the bills are paid at the next council meeting. This council meeting, can you see at the bottom of this page? You paid $504,000 for a medical, and $599,000 for the last. I'm sorry, this is the check, my check tape, page number one. Right bottom, wire cameras. These were payments made for medical costs. And they were made for payroll, over $599,000 for the last paid. And the last couple are small debt service payments that the city had incurred over the years. Next, we'll leave the bills looking to approve. And there's not a whole lot of them. My system's been out for a couple weeks, it'll be out until next Monday because of a death in the family. But we'll go over some of the bills that have been taken care of. Look at page two. Some big ones that we always talk about is in the middle. The Candidate County HCUA, rather, for trash pickup, $120,000. The next one down is fuel, $10,004. Little reduction from this month over the last couple months. Three or four down, BRT technology, is that a software that's utilized by the central office, where he can go out on the field, look at his tablet, and transmit information back and forth between his computer in the office and a computer, his laptop, to verify information that he sees on the property, make sure that's correct.
Coach, can you explain it for me now?
Yep. If the tech center was that deep, they could look at his tablet, and he can tell if there's been any additions on the property, because all he'd see is back in his, he can see his property record card back in his office. This is maybe to one story, but garage. He's looking at a house now, it's a story and a half, a two-car garage. He can, he can see that, and right away, he'd be able to know that work's been added, it'll be added, that's not placed on that property. So what he's doing is, he's verifying this information back in the office by looking at his tablet and looking at the property. Go to top page three, dental insurance for active and retirees for the month. We go over to page four, but four or five down, SHI International. This is what our software uses for virus protection and for a sonic wall to keep as many people as we can from invading our software. people as we can from invading our software. All the other bills are really utility bills, and I'll let you go back over, tip over page seven. Just see Southgate, total of $1,008,000 going out. That is for work that's being done on Amity Boulevard. That is draw number two for Amity Boulevard. And Decatur Avenue, that is the first and second draw for Decatur. The first draw came in, I think, the day of, or the day after the last council meeting, so we're paying that now. And the second draw came in on February 1st, so that'll be a second draw. And then, the very last one at the page, union roofing. We had a roof problem down at D P W. It's a metal roof, they were able to take care of the leaks and patch it up and, probably works satisfied with what's been done. And right now, there are no leaks.
Page six.
Go ahead, let's hit the bottom.
I have a question. Mr. President. On page six, the first item...
I'm sorry, Carl, page two?
Six.
Six.
The first item, 123, 175, is that for the same person as 222?
This is for loss of car leotard, right? Page six?
Yes.
That one? That is, there was a conflict with our prosecutor, and this case was taken over to, actually tried in Ocean City because of conflict. This is a state versus, I'm trying to think of the name of the person, but it's not relevant. But he worked on our behalf in Ocean City.
Against this person?
Against a person.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, you see the name right there at the bottom. Any other questions?
Yes, I do have another question. Back to the tax assessors thing with the tablet. You know, I've always talked to you guys about him only being here one day a week, so that's a little concerning to me. But I just want to make sure that if we're upgrading that tablet, that that tablet is being used at present.
It only has information regarding a plug-in. No, if he has it somewhere else, that's fine. But if we're buying a software that communicates with plug-in information?
Okay.
Mr. Goody, can we go back to page six, the first one, the 228? Why are we paying that and not the school district?
Not who?
The school district.
Because it's a criminal, through you, counsel president, because it's a criminal matter, it's brought on behalf of state statutes, and municipality is the one who hears criminal offenses, not a criminal matter, it's a criminal offense, in municipal court. So it would be the municipal court, which is part of the city property, regardless of the person's status of board of education. If any incident on the board of education property, which are allegedly in violation of state statute, then the city would be responsible for prosecuting it or any conflict. Prosecutors, as you see in this particular case.
I go along, but you're the attorney. They have $120 million budget, we have $35 million, and that's my... You know what you're talking about.
Next is public portion. Anyone in the public wishing to speak on agenda items, agenda items only, forward.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Tim Jones, Pleasantville resident. I would like to address two other ideas that I see on this agenda. Resolution 47. I see, Resolution 47 is with regards to funding, is coming through the green acres. I have no issues with that, but my question is, with regards to the tax abatement that was presented for the apartment complex on the old high school site, this block and block number was also considered in that 30-year tax abatement. And my question is, how does this Joker's Field even connect to that, since it's owned by the city, to even be granted?
You kind of like to get off of this, I think you change your question up a little bit, then?
Well, it's regarding the residential to green acres. I thought the green acres monies were to support whatever development, in terms of like someone said, parks and things like that on that area. And my question was, how does that pertain to the request for a tax abatement on that same property, it's owned by the city? I just don't understand that.
Well, the tax abatement is not in reference to property that's owned by the city, and this specific resolution is specifically for the Green Acres property that is owned by the city, not the redeveloper.
But the reason why I mention is because the Joker's Field was specifically outlined by a block and lot number in that request to be part of that 30-year tax abatement. And yet, city property, I didn't understand why it was even included in there, where it was bought and purchased by the developer.
The Joker's Field is not part, the old Joker's Field, which is Green Acres property that is owned by the city, is not part of the tax abatement.
And that wasn't one of those three block and lot numbers?
I'm not sure what block and lot number you're talking about, but what I'm saying to you now is, is that the old Joker's Field, which is the Green Acres site, is not owned by the developer, it's owned by the city, and it's not part of the tax abatement.
And it's like perpendicular, no, parallel to the high school site, but on the other side of Hampton, am I correct about that? Well, that is the block and lot number that was outlined in that other agreement. May want to check on that, please. Second question regarding Resolution 48. This redevelopment agreement, is this redevelopment agreement and M O U available to the public?
The redevelopment agreement hasn't been entered into yet, so it's technically still under negotiation, so it's not subject to the Open Public Records Act yet. The M O U is something that is overable if it was executed.
Okay, and that would be required to receive that document, then?
Really close.
Okay, thank you. Just one more question with... I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Dear Archie, Pleasantville, good evening, everyone. Ordinance number one, chapter 48, police department, entitled hiring and promotions. Explanation: Ad language ordinance to include that entry-level law enforcement officer must complete training within the nine months from the date of hire as a temporary entry-level officer. Questions, two questions in that. Resident, as far as Pleasantville residents, being hired for the police department, if there is a new hire on entry level with that individual, for the police department, have to be a resident or president?
You asked to get us.
Okay, next question to that. Ninety days for officer for promotion, so therefore, officer is already working for Pleasantville. In order to go for promotion, you have to be already an officer within Pleasantville. So that officer has ninety days also, I'm sorry, is it ninety days, nine months? Nine months for to move, I mean, for the train, for a new position, is that it? So civil service has nothing to do with that, according to this language here? Am I right or wrong?
That is civil service, nine months.
Nine months, yeah, nine months, that's my fault. Okay, okay. Resolution 43, is it a reference to approving participation for, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Yeah, that's right, that's right. Participation in the LEAK implementation grant. It speaks about the explanation, to participate in the shared service with the city of Atlantic City as lead applicant for pothole repair equipment. Pothole repair, so is this saying for the potholes to be repaired, or for the equipment to be repaired?
It's to purchase equipment.
It's to purchase equipment?
To repair the potholes.
Okay, okay, I just wanted to be sure, just wanted to be sure. No problem.
And it's for Atlantic City to purchase the equipment?
Right, I got you, I got you. But Atlantic City's not saying Pleasantville has to pay for damage and stuff like that if you need to answer to the equipment, right? Because it's shared service.
That's to be the term.
Okay, 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 okay. Resolution number 45, the old turnpike landscape, $549,000. Explanation: Award a contract for road improvements on old turnpike from New Jersey that grant and general capital funds. So the grant is paying for this project to get done and the city's capital funds? Or am I reading that wrong?
No, you're reading it correct. The grant award, I believe, is $500,000, and the city's capital funds will pay the balance.
Question on that, I'm going to eliminate this question. Is there any explanation as far as how much the city will pay towards that? Since it's coming out of the capital fund, how much coming out of the capital fund?
$94,000.
$94,000?
Yes, because it's $500,000.
Alright, listen, done. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else want to comment? Number one, any say the motion for a public portion? Any say motion for a public portion?
Motion. Everybody sleep.
Everybody sleep. Now we are open for discussion for council, council down for, council on the front.
Nothing at this time.
Any say motion for a session?
Motion.
Second.
Move right in. Everybody good?
Yes.
Good evening again, this is the city of Pleasantville, city council regular meeting. Today's date is February 6, 2023, the time is 7:10 PM. This meeting has been duly advertised in the city's newspaper in performance with the Open Public Meeting Act, otherwise known as Sunshine Row, please stand for.
Emocation. And a flag.
Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come, thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this egg, take it red, give it trespassing, so that you look for trespassing assistance in the eye of the protection of the liberation of evil. By thy name we keep, our love and glory, ever and ever. Transgressions of the flag of the United States of America into the Republic, always stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all. Roll call.
Davenport.
Present.
Fennelara, here. Thomas.
Present.
Camona.
Present.
Korea.
Present.
Barclay.
Present.
Sisdrum.
Present.
All of them.
Yes, I'm sorry, my mind's a little foggy today. But I do have some good news as far as with our Pleasantville track team. Our boys went up to Tom's River, they won. Yes, my... All right, good. I had something else.
Go ahead, go ahead, this is finished, this is finished.
Alright, so they went up to Tom's River, they did very well. I think they're going to the states for the four-by-four, the 5,500, and I'm very proud. My grandson jumped 6'6" on Saturday, which qualified him for the states. He's number one in the state of New Jersey, and 25, ranked 25th in the nation. So, you know, Pleasantville track team is doing some great things, and, you know, I just feel I'm glad to hear.
Counselor President, we may as well mention that yesterday, the Greyhounds beat the Vikings, we battled Vikings.
Yes.
Did they have a score?
I think it was by one, it was an exciting game all time, and in the end, eight seconds left, 54-53, one point.
Good first of the year, that's great. Out of court program?
Motion to approve previous minutes.
Motion.
More favor? Any accommodations prior to this?
No, what I would like to mention though, is that in the city of Pleasantville, we have a centenarian that lives on Wright Street. She's lived there for 80 years, and January 23rd was her birthday. And she, I was talking to her, she's more alert than anybody in this room, and she's just, it's just so good to know that we have someone here in our city. She's the only one that I know of right now, and it's just so heartwarming to see her and know that she's been here all this time. Keep her in your prayers.
Counselor President, is there a motion pending?
No, we didn't.
Next is accommodations, accommodations.
Okay, first, ordinance number one, first reading, amendment chapter 48, police department entitled hiring and promotion, section 48 dash 48A, exemption from civil service examination.
Motion.
Second.
Roll call, Davenport.
Yes.
Fennelara. Thomas.
Yes.
Camona.
Yes.
Korea.
Yes.
Barclay.
Yes.
Sisdrum.
Yes.
Motion approved to move to second reading, scheduled for February 22nd. Resolution 43, approve of the participation in the LEAK implementation grant.
Motion.
Second.
Roll call, Davenport.
Yes.
Fennelara.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Camona.
Yes.
Korea.
Yes.
Barclay.
Yes.
Sisdrum.
Yes.
Resolution approved. Resolution 44, authorizing assignment of the municipal lien certificates to Benjamin Franklin Capital LLC. Roll call, Davenport.
Yes.
Fennelara.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Camona.
Yes.
Korea.
Yes.
Barclay.
Yes.
Sisdrum.
Yes.
Resolution approved. Resolution 45, awarded the contract for the old turnpike street skates improvements to Command Company Incorporated in amount of $594,425.00.
Motion. Second.
Roll call, Davenport.
Yes.
Fennelara.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Camona.
Yes.
Korea.
Yes.
Barclay.
Yes.
Sisdrum.
Yes.
Resolution approved. Resolution 46, authorizing allergic civil repair services on Hampton Court and Western Avenue.
Motion.
Second.
Roll call, Davenport.
Yes.
Fennelara.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Camona.
Yes.
Korea.
Yes.
Barclay.
Yes.
Sisdrum.
Second.
So noted, resolution approved. Resolution 47, enabling the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection's Green Acres Program for supplemental funding request.
Motion.
Second.
Roll call, Davenport.
Yes.
Fennelara.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Camona.
Yes.
Korea.
Yes.
Barclay.
Yes.
Sisdrum.
Yes.
Resolution approved. Resolution 48, authorizing execution of redevelopment agreement with ideal institute of technology regarding the redevelopment of 10-00 Washington Avenue.
Motion.
Second.
Roll call, Davenport.
Yes.
Fennelara.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Barclay.
Yes.
Korea.
Yes.
Camona.
Yes.
Sisdrum.
Yes.
Resolution approved. Next, I mean, motion to approve the buildings.
Motion, second.
Roll call, Davenport.
Yes.
Fennelara.
Yes.
Thomas.
I wouldn't say yes on everything. I want to refuse myself from 34165 for on board the nation.
You said 34165?
Yes.
So noted. Camona.
Yes.
Korea.
Yes.
Barclay.
Yes.
Sisdrum.
Yes.
Motion approved. Next, public portion.
Next is public portion, anyone from the public, Mr. Steven Leighton, please come forward today, we have some remarks on the microphone.
You want the list, or you just...
Yeah, I want the list. He just want to talk with Eric. Oh, okay. Alright, anyone else? Anyone from the public?
I can't hear you.
Here. I got you.
But I would like to hear you too.
I got you.
Thank you.
I said I have.
Edward, my name, you call Edward?
Yes.
Want to talk to y'all? Okay, I bring a service to the City of Pleasantville, resident of three fifty South, as you know. Bring a financial service to the people here, financial literacy that we don't know. I know we don't know it. And to help with everyone's retirement, 401Ks, IRA, roll overs, things that are helping, help their money. Outlive business, let them out living and retiring. That's a lot that's happening. I bring that literacy to, uh, City of Pleasantville. I've got some calls with, uh, Mrs. King. Hopefully, if you can give me a call, I'm, I'm, I'm more than sure I can help everyone in this room. So long as you have a job, you'll be alright. Thank you for your time.
Oh, excuse me.
Yes, excuse me.
I just want you guys to know, I met this young man at the gym, and we had a real conversation and talked about he wanted to do some things out at the rec center. Maybe go seminar or something like that with finances. So I thought it was a good idea, and I told him to come to the council meeting then, you know, explain what he wanted to do. So in a nutshell, that's what it is. He wanted to try to get the rec center so that in the future he could do a seminar to educate the community on, on how to deal with the finances. And hopefully make it better.
Great, I'm pretty sure you can send out the chairman there. Is the chairman of the council?
Alright, am I correct?
Yes, you are.
Alright.
Thank you.
Go ahead and speak. I'm sorry. Thank you so much. Okay?
Thank you very much.
Excuse me. Make sure you talk and speak before you leave tonight.
Okay.
Here's my card, and I, and I'll get your card from the clerk, and I'll follow up with you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Baker. Uh, Joe, J. V. Inlighter? Uh, I guess not, I guess not. Um, Dale Arch?
Your friend is back.
Mr. Arch?
Good evening again, everyone. Now, we know we had a problem with the pilot program as a reference to, it's not doing much for the taxpayers. So, uh, I submitted a open request to the city. And my number one question was, regarding all existing pilot program payments, specifically what were the agreed upon payment schedule and what was? I'm sorry, what has been received by the City of Pleasantville? For the village at St. Peters, collections as of January twenty twenty-three, thirty-eight thousand, one hundred ninety-nine dollars, fifteen cents. Center City Project.
Excuse me. Can you give us a timeframe on, you know, since that's the fee, how long, over how many, how many years?
Well, that would be better answered by one of the individuals here, because I, my question was, what were the agreed upon payment schedules? And what has been received from the city since they've been in existence? Now, anyone from the table that can answer when this thing was built over here on Washington Avenue, St. Peters and so forth? I don't have those dates. So don't take my time, right? Set up my time. Alright. Should I carry on, sir?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Center City Projects, one hundred eighty-five thousand, two hundred seventy-one dollars. Four nineteen West Delaunay Road, this is the Karen Residence Properties. Um, one, fourteen thousand, seven hundred twenty-six thousand, fifty-five cents. Karen property also. One on nine West Delaunay Road, six thousand, seven hundred ninety-nine dollars and five cents. Uh, Karen Residence as well. Nine ten Homer Avenue, six thousand, seven hundred ninety-nine dollars, five cents. New Hold Project, fifty-one thousand, four hundred twenty-eight-two cents. Total, three hundred, three thousand, two hundred fifteen dollars and sixty-two cents. Since these places have been in existence, that's what we've been getting from the pilot program on these projects right here. So if we doing a pilot program, we are not benefiting from it. And the pilot program was making so much money for the City of Pleasantville to where it's, though it was a proven factor to where it was beneficial to Pleasantville, somebody should have been standing on a soapbox saying how well the program is working and how much money that we're getting. That has never been done. When I done paperwork on this to get the information, this comes back from the City of Pleasantville. And it adds up this date, so that means from when those buildings was in exist, existence up to now, this is the only money that we got from these pilot programs. So I would say to council, do your homework, don't go to more pilot programs because it's not beneficial to Pleasantville right now. It's not getting us out of a hole. We also found out now, we just hear also, that we got, on the ordinance, you do a five-year tax abatement. What is that getting us? We, we, we keep doing abatements for developers, their job is to make money. The City of Pleasantville is to get out of a hole. Proof's in the pudding. If it's not getting you out of a hole, don't keep doing the same thing. It's common sense. It's time to stop this stuff. And if I'm wrong, I stand to be corrected from the information that I received. So ladies and gentlemen, on a die basis, it would behoove you to think about it. You sell a product, you have to look at your return. Now, if this return isn't giving you the kind of money you think it should have been giving you, you got to look at what's in black money that you're getting from your own city. How long this building's been in existence. You should say no more pilot programs because it's not beneficial to the City of Pleasantville because you guys are representing the residents, and we the residents saying no more. No more pilot programs. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you and have a good night. Tax rate is way down. It's a great morning.
Good evening, everyone. Ladies and gentlemen, Pleasantville. Um, I wanted to know if anyone can help me. Uh, I want to know, who is in charge of the Internal Affairs Department? I was just part of the one.
I, I can tell you how an internal affairs department works, but what's your specific question?
Um, I, I wanted to know because there was a, a resident here in Pleasantville who was filing, a lot of police. They did follow the, uh, IA. And I just wanted to know what was going to happen. If it's usually what happened with across the country, when you follow internal affairs, it's the police policing the police, and nothing usually never happens.
So, uh, internal affairs departments, uh, which are typically divisions within the police department, are under the curfew of the prosecutor's office, which is the top law enforcement office within each respective county. But they also follow the lead of the Attorney General Guidelines. So they are required to undergo an investigation when there are civilian complaints or even internal complaints of excessive force or constitutional violations. And, uh, at the conclusion of that investigation, they should render some type of writing saying that it's been sustained or that it's been unfounded or that the officer is exonerated to the individual who has filed the complaint. If it is a death, then it's automatically superseded by the prosecutor's office. So it depends on the extent of the allegation of excessive force, whether it will stay with the local internal affairs department or whether it will go to prosecutor's office. I'm speaking in a hypothetical because I don't know what, what matter you're talking about. And also, even if I did, if it's during the pendency of an investigation, the information couldn't be revealed. But at a certain point, um, if in fact there is an internal affairs complaint that was made and written down and documented, there should be something received by that individual indicating whether or not they found that the officer did in fact, um, commit that incident. And then internally, the police department looks at whether or not they want to bring disciplinary charges.
I just wanted to bring to the attention, of all of you, there was a video of this. And it was quite disturbing to me of how the police department acted. If, and, and I have the video. I don't have it with me right now. But I'll be glad to share with all of you. And I know none of you would be happy the way the police handled this incident. And after seeing this and the rage in these police officers, what happened in Tennessee could have quite happened that night. It, it, it's to me, what I've seen, the police doesn't have, they don't have any training as far as de-escalating incidents. They escalate it. It's, it's, I mean, you have to see it. It's, it's, it's terrible. It is terrible.
After, after this, you're not going to get a chance to speak with the chief?
No. The chief, he already knows what's going on. I want you guys to see it. And I'm quite sure you will not be happy with the Pleasantville Police Department. Because if that incident happened with that one person, I know it happens all the time.
Mr. County, I want to know if this happened.
I'm not going to, um, reveal that. I don't want to reveal because it, I don't want to, um, I, I don't want, the person who's already was victimized, they're scared to death.
Okay, my only question for asking that was to see whether or not you've given everybody a chance to, uh, go through the, you know, do the exercises that they should go through when that happens. So time-wise, that's all.
Oh, okay. As far as I know, it was already filed.
Okay.
The IA.
Alright.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jones. Uh, Renee? Renee?
My question, I had the same question about the abatements. And I want to know if anybody can tell me, um, the gentleman gave you the numbers and stuff and said that that was since the inception of the contract and everything. I want to know how that money has benefited the residents of Pleasantville. Has it lowered our taxes, has it stopped our taxes from going up? Like, what's our benefit? Anybody can answer.
Anytime you bring in business, you're going to bring in ratables. And the ratables is going to help sustain the lower taxes, but help sustain the taxes.
The first thing that I would need to do, first of all, before I respond as to the benefits, is to confirm the numbers. Because as, uh, Mr. Archie stated out the numbers, he just, first of all, I, I can't confirm that those are the numbers to tell you what the benefits would be for the city to gain whatever the numbers are. So I would certainly need to confirm the numbers.
Okay, so do I call you later to find out? Or does anybody, anybody else here know the answer? That those numbers are correct? Because I, I'm, I reached out to a couple of people and.
You can certainly call me for the, and I'll confirm the numbers.
Okay, because I, I want the numbers, the, the confirmation for the numbers. And also, I just want to know how that benefits us. Because I don't see how that benefits Pleasantville. And to just continue to do abatement after abatement, it's like digging a hole and jumping in. According to that.
So can I have one of your cards?
Right. Thanks for the call. Yes.
Can we, can I please also get those numbers and also the number of time when, you know, the, um, the abatement started so that we know.
Everything, whatever I need to public, I'll make sure that council has this. Thank you.
Mr. Jones?
Mr. Jones, Pleasantville again. I would like to share my sentiments with, um, prior to conversations with regards to the advantages that have been received by the tax abatement programs. And if it's true that, well, as we perceive it to be, you could say that all of say five, six, seven, eight hundred, I don't know how many housing units if you add them all together, from the Woodlands, from the, uh, Karen, from the, uh, Main and, um, Milan Project, and from St. Peter's, you're talking probably seven, eight, nine hundred housing units. They have actually paid in property taxes as much as fifty homes in one year in the City of Pleasantville. And they've been in existence fifteen years, twenty years, some of them, ten years, whatever. It's just an astounding small amount of money to be given, given this consideration of the volume of people being serviced by those programs. I think that's our main concern. A second point I would like to make is one that we made, um, months and months ago. I, I, I feel it's unfair to you as our council to be in, to receive a package on Friday and be expected to vote on a resolution or give, uh, uh, definite or, um, 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 consideration to a matter on that following Monday. You need more time. I wish you could consider a process where you give yourselves more time. For example, this, this, um, Green Acres, um, um, resolution forty-second, uh, forty-seven. Um, and, no, resolution forty, uh, eight, it was stated, it's just a, um, uh, resolution to allow this to go through zone. Yet there's a, a redevelopment agreement attached to it that we still publicly can't see, as well as an MOU. These things need to be read and considered. And you cannot do it if you're just giving the persons that are, I'm talking about you, the persons, a weekend to do it. Please reconsider how you're doing business because you cannot serve the public interest of Pleasantville when you don't even have time to look into what you're bringing to. Thank you.
Thanks. Uh, Mr. Magazoo?
Um, Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Um, just FYI, we do have committee meetings. So in those committee meetings, we usually talk, well, we do talk about everything that's on the agenda.
Well, excuse me, sir. Thank you for that, but, uh, my understanding is a lot of the time that information that comes out of those committees is not conveyed to the, um, the body of the council in, in a, um, a formal or timely manner. It's just, it's a decision that comes out of the committee and it gets pitched to the body. It's not, that's not sufficient. I think everybody should be given the right amount of time to give reasonable consideration to the things you're voting on. That's all I'm saying. Don't give you three days. Give you a week and three days. Come on, give yourselves a break. And give us a break. I would like to know that you have had time to do your job. Thank you.
Good evening, uh, Mr. President, Mayor, members of council. For those of you who do not know me, my name is Lou Magazoo. I am an attorney with offices in violent Atlantic City, and I am with, uh, my client, Ren Pierre Louis. Uh, we have, uh, for a couple of years now been in discussions with, uh, the city on a cannabis project on California Avenue. A couple of council people reached out to my client asking for an update. And I suggested to him it might be appropriate to visit with everybody because there's some dates that are coming up that he may want to know about. Uh, the, uh, first little background. Um, this for those who are, members who are not members then. This is a project that brings tax revenue into the town.
I'm, I'm sorry. Can I ask you a serious question?
Yes, you can.
Is this a contract grant?
We're not, we're not in negotiation with them at this moment. He's simply speaking during public comment, which they can do.
Okay.
It's the response that should be cautioned.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, this is just an update that, uh, because, uh, there has been some change in council since this project was put together. So this is a project that will bring tax into town, bring revenue into town as a result of a two percent, uh, percentage commission, uh, not commission, but payment. Additionally, we waived any type of tax abatement when we made the, the agreement with the city. Uh, we will be, uh, cannabis unfortunately has had some funding issues nationally since we first got engaged in this project. And we met with a number of possible funders, investors. Uh, and I'm happy to say that we're, uh, going to be filing what's called the conversion application on April eleventh. Um, that is the final application. The, uh, state gave what was originally called a conditional license. And you had to fulfill a number of criteria to be able to file the conversion application. And we're going to do that. Uh, working with Mr. Genetti, uh, also, uh, we had, the last communication we had from your prior council, uh, was in June of twenty twenty-two when we had the redevelopment agreement that was signed. Looking forward to, I know you have new council, uh, looking forward to working with, uh, your city attorney.
Yeah, we, the redevelopment attorney.
Uh, or the redevelopment attorney, or, or both, copy both, you know, certainly. Uh, I, I spent many years as a city attorney, and I always liked to have the city attorney also.
You understand how that works.
Yeah, absolutely. But I want to make sure that, you know, we're all involved together and everyone knows, uh, what's, what's, what's going on. So there's no surprises. Uh, but the, the larger point I wanted to make was that, uh, we're looking to do the conversion on April eleventh. Um, we're looking to do it in a way that we think can expedite the process. And we're hopeful, God willing, to be able to bring in revenue by the end of the year, which would be revenue for the City of Pleasantville. Um, as I work with your redevelopment council and with your, with your municipal attorney and any others, um, we'll come back with, you know, a final, uh, outline with timelines and things of that nature. But things are moving very quickly. And there have been several investors that we've met with over time. And frankly, some have fallen away. And there have been several investors that we've met with, uh, over time and frankly, some have fallen away and, and better ones have come to the fore. So we're very pleased about that. And, uh, just since a couple of, uh, members had shown some interest, I, I said to my client, we should come and visit and just not negotiate, but advise and update, uh, out of respect, particularly because there's some new members of the public council. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Next is.
Congressmen, Mayor, Councilors.
Congressmen, Mayor and Councilor. I'm sorry, thank you. Uh, here to take a motion, both public portion.
Motion. Second.
On favor?
Aye.
As has it. Next is Congressman Mayor, Councilor, Fred Ward.
I'd like to thank everyone for coming out. Um, I don't think I have anything extra to add tonight. We did hear your concerns. And, um, we are all trying to make the best decisions that we can for the City of Pleasantville. We all love Pleasantville and have your best interests at heart, our best interests at heart. And I just ask that you continue to come out and voice your opinions, but know that any of us up here, we're making the decisions that we think are best for the city. We're voting, hopefully, I can speak for everyone, saying we're voting our conscience. And, um, that's about, that's about it. Have anything else? I did ask you to keep, uh, our sentitorian in prayer and her name is Jacqueline Prescott. Okay, thank you and have a good evening.
Just a, uh, general remark, um, I will get back to those that I have given my cards to, but this month of, uh, of February annually is American Heart Month. Um, so just be mindful for self-care, um, see your doctors, particularly men, um, and take care of yourselves because, um, you know, our health is important and, um, families are important and life is really short. So just remember to self-care.
Councilman Davenport?
Yes, uh, first of all, I want to thank everyone for coming out. And I just wanted to piggyback off what the mayor said, you know, we are working to make things better in Pleasantville. We're trying to set up meetings and things of that nature along with Miss Peyton. We able to set up a meeting, uh, last week, was it? With, uh, some potential investors and one of them is in the audience right now, Mr. Lowell Valencia, um, who's looking to do some serious things in the city. And I'm hoping that we can attract more of that type of, um, you know, interest in the city. So that's what we're looking to do and that's what I'm looking to do. And hopefully that from here on out, things will get better. So, uh, thank you for coming out. God bless.
I want to thank everyone for sharing out tonight. Uh, your presence is an encouragement for what we are doing. I would encourage you to turn out and ask questions. Uh, we are catching up as new council persons and we appreciate your cooperation, your participation. So I would encourage you to feel free, ask questions, as you ask your questions, we learn from you. And I want to thank my colleagues for welcoming and accommodating my learning process. Thank you very much.
Good evening, everybody. I want to thank everybody for coming out, thank you for your concerns, keep coming out. Thank you and have a blessed night, stay safe. I just want to thank everybody for coming out. Thank you, guys.
I'm glad that the mayor brought up Mrs. Prescott. She probably has a wealth of information stored in her head. And maybe you can have a collaboration with the high school, get some students over there to talk to her, document the things that she has to say. Because unfortunately, you don't really care about that stuff until it's gone and she takes it with her. So that, if we don't remember history, we're doomed to repeat those things. So she would be a wealth of information.
Counselor on the titles.
Good evening, everyone. Um, I want to say congratulations to the, the rec team, well, congratulations to the rec, Trina and her team. They put on a, um, a great, re-grand opening of the boxing ring last Friday. Um, it was a great event. Um, they had, um, a lot of people were there, you know, celebrating that with Trina and, um, her staff. Um, the paint job was excellent. Um, actually, one of the workers over there, she drew the boxing gloves on the wall, Angie. So congratulations to the rec. Once again, congratulations to our boys, um, basketball team and, um, you know, just keep our, our students in your prayers.
Great. I'd like to thank you all for, for coming out and putting input. And also, um, uh, piggyback off the council with the, uh, rec center. Um, congratulations, I think a congratulation goes to, uh, Public Works as well. Because Public Works, uh, they checked in and they saved the city a ton of money. They, uh, when you assemble those things, uh, for a gym, it can cost upwards of ten, fifteen thousand dollars, whatever it was. Whatever the price, uh, would have been, they go out and bid, but Public Works came in and they, they saved us on that. So, as, um, uh, the gym itself, you know, uh, the rec center itself, you know, uh, we go back, when I was a kid, we talked about George Phil and George Phil, I just lost to Ali. And when he lost to Ali, he said, I quit. First, his first loss of the title and he said, I'm going to open up a center. So he opened up the center. When he opened up the center, uh, center was doing well, did it in Houston, did it for a while. But then when he started running out money, he says, well, then I'm going to go back to boxing, which was eighty-nine, eighty-eight, eighty-nine, to make, to get money for the center. We, uh, we inherited the center. Everybody that comes in here inherited the city, uh, the center, the, um, the rec center. Because none of us was here when we were attempting to try to build it. But what we always have to do and what's in place right now, and I thank the administrator for, um, uh, seeing my vision and that and carried on to Mr. Thomas and now Mr. Barclay's as, uh, doing the upgrades that it needed and necessary. Because the center itself is pre-policing. There's the mentorship that's in the club, it's pre-policing, get to, you're able to get those that are working in the club, get a chance to get to them before the chief gets to them. And that's the most important thing for the community because of the camaraderie, it builds camaraderie. You got seniors there in the morning, you got the young, young people coming in there, you got young fathers, mothers, that's, that's, that's in there and also the kids that come to the center. It's extremely important. And it shouldn't have to, never be a tussle to make sure that we do what we're supposed to do, what's right for. It's looking good. It's looking great, I thank you. I thank you. Thanks again. Uh, thanks for the developer to come out. I know you reach, you know, you reach out to one another and everything. Uh, uh, at some point, we're going to have to start branch projects through here and we're going to do a great job of doing it. And we'll always have your, uh, best interest, trying to do what's best for the City of Pleasantville, uh, pleasant City of Pleasantville. I can say a motion to adjourn.
Motion.